You can turn it off.
Well, the weather was perfect.
Yeah.
Except for the dustblower.
Yeah.
Two days it was windy. Yesterday it was the hardest when I was pulling the cam. It's usually.
You gotta fight it going and fight it on really bad.
Yep. The hands are a little sore today from gripping the steering wheel.
It's nine o'clock. We're gonna call the meeting of the Cottington County Commissioners to order. If you'd please rise, I'll have Commissioner Waterman lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
I will. I'm the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Number two, um, it's a call for public comment. If somebody would like to, uh, comment, they can either be here in person or they can use the telephone number six oh five eight eight two six two four eight or six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven. Um, and if you have a cell phone, could you please silence it? And if you, uh, need to take a call, we'd appreciate if you do it out in the hall. Number three, is there any conflict of interest?
No.
Nope, no.
Or, um, need a motion to approve the September third, uh, agenda?
So moved.
Okay, uh, motion by, um, Van Dusen, second by Gable?
Yep. So, so we're discussing about number twelve that could result in our resolution.
Okay, well, make that note. That's noted that, that, that may come up. Um, is there any other thing that we need to? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number five, need a motion to approve the August twenty seventh minutes. Motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Gable. Any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay. Item six. Um, now we'll, uh, open it up for a public hearing on our twenty twenty five uh, Cottington County provisional budget. Not seeing anything, we'll now, uh, close the public hearing on the twenty twenty five Cottington County provisional budget. Is there any other thing we need to do with that? Okay. Uh, no monthly reports?
You might just state, we will continue to have, uh, those public hearings every Tuesday in September, except for the board will not meet on September seventeenth due to, um, county convention, uh, but it will be adopted the twenty fourth of September.
Okay. Yeah, so if someone would like to come and, uh, voice their concerns or opinion, they can certainly do it on those days, except for the day, September seventeenth, when we're going to be, uh, gone to the state commissioner meeting. Okay, moving down to number eight, discussion, discussion possible action to authorize chair to sign the contract for the engineering service with Banner on, uh, right away on Fourteenth Avenue. Rick, if you wanna.
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning, Rick.
Hi, Rick.
Yeah, this is to have Banner Associates help with the acquisition of Right Away on the bridge for Fourteenth Avenue. Just to have them, the scope of work is providing easement documents, assist with landowner negotiations, act as the county's represent representative regarding easements and things like that to just hopefully get this taken care of so we can get that bridge replaced.
The move.
Okay. Motion by Johnson, second by, uh, Waterman.
You wanna mention the amount?
And the price is eleven thousand dollars.
Yep. You want me to include that?
Yep.
I'll put that in the motion.
By what, by Waterman.
Yep.
I would prefer on that eleven thousand.
Any more questions or discussion?
What's a timeline on that bridge project up there on Fourteenth?
Yes. That it'll depend on if things go well. We have to have all the right away stuff signed. Mark's worked on, uh, it's all been sent to the state, what the design and stuff is.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, part of it'll be contractors. When it can be, when they'll be available to build it.
Okay.
That's, that's part of the negotiations anymore is, um, like the one down on, uh, County Road twenty.
Mm-hmm.
That's gonna go to bid this fall. That was changed. What you guys got here last week or the week before, they've already changed that date. It's into November now. And, uh, it'll depend on how the contractors line up when it can be built. So that, that all plays a part of it.
Yeah, thank you.
It's gonna be a pretty good sized project.
Yes, it will.
Is it gonna be like a? How long does it take to build a bridge? I don't know.
It's a couple of months.
Okay.
It is.
Couple of months?
Yeah. Fourteenth Avenue will be shut down for two to three months.
Okay.
And that all depends on the weather.
Sure.
You know, remember when they did the bridge on two twelve?
Mm-hmm.
And the water came up. It had to be shut down for a while. So every, there's multiple factors to all that.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions? For Rick?
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Rick. Okay. Number nine. Uh, action to authorize chair to sign the twenty twenty five seasonal Memorial Park Management Service Agreement. Steve, if you wanna. Come up and.
Morning, Steve.
Good morning. Um, yeah, what this is, is a contract for two thousand twenty five for the, or, uh, park managers out there. Um, we usually get this done now before they actually go down south for the winter and so that, so, um, then that would be authorized to sign this contract.
Contract is for the amount?
For the amount of nineteen thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars.
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Uh, motion by Van Dusen, second by Gable. Any more questions?
Just can you highlight the key changes, just?
What's that?
It's basically a pay raise.
Yep, it's a pay raise, yeah. Yep.
Their previous amount that they were receiving was nineteen thousand, two hundred.
Yeah, so it'd be about two point five percent, I believe.
Okay.
Any further question for Steve? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Okay, uh, item ten, action to advertise and hire a full-time administrative support position in the treasurer's office. Natalie, if you wanna come and explain that.
Morning.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Good morning. Um, so we are looking to add a position temporarily in, um, planning for future retirements there, um, to um, just make that whole transition process smoother. So there'd be temporary additional, which would be, um, replace or change next year, basically. Um, this is a grade level twenty, um, on our wage scale starts at nineteen fifty-three and we'd like to advertise and hope to fill that in the next month or so.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any other questions?
Just to, to emphasize that it's, it's not adding another full-time F P E. It's actually temporarily adding one until one of the individuals retires or plans on retiring.
Correct, yep, just some business continuity and to ensure smoother transitions and there's some new software and stuff coming into that office.
Yeah.
Will be challenging.
Just so the public understands.
Absolutely.
I would also like to commend Carol for her foresight on that, you know, just, uh, planning for the, the retirement of a future employee and having somebody on staff that's trained and ready to go when that employee retires is a good thing, so.
Absolutely.
And Carol was in here last week, but I don't know if she said or if she going to try to hire a V S A P?
I believe so. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
No further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Item eleven, action to declare office equipment at the emergency management office surplus to be destroyed.
Right, so you have that list in your packet. It's an assortment of different items. Um, if you want me to mention them all, that's fine. Otherwise, it is just some office equipment, radios, printers that they have gone through and no longer need, don't work, whatever they want them to be.
Second.
Motion by Gable, second by Van Dusen, um. Any further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay. Number twelve, discussion possible action about possible budgeting of funds for a community daycare project at the Mother of God Monastery. As most everybody knows, we've been discussing this community situation and today we have Sister Barb. I see we have, uh, our city manager Amanda Mack here. If either you would like to come up and comment and fill us in on what is proceeding.
Morning.
Good morning. Um, first of all, I wanna commend the city and the county for calling together the meeting that we had, uh, last, it was last Wednesday, right? Um, I appreciated the thoughtful discussion, the hearing of the concerns, um, knowing that the parents and staff are in a lot of pain. What do we do with our most precious gifts, our children? Um, I also want to talk about the fact that this is a quality of life and economic development issue as much as it is about what are we gonna do with our kids? So I appreciate the, the reality check that this brings to all of us and how uh, Cottington County and the city of Watertown would really follow the example of some other cities in our state that are being very proactive, um, so that we can we can bring that quality of life and, and sustain an economic development. It's, it's really very important. So I want to thank you so much for even considering this.
Right.
Yes, we appreciate all that you've helped with this. You know, so far as we've been going through this process, yes. And I agree. Our kids are the most precious thing we have. And that dictates a lot, what we're doing in life, our children.
It does, and we could say they're the future. They are, but they're here now. So how do we help them now? So I wanna, I just appreciate it very much. If your donation could somehow, your generosity could somehow be worked into your budget, that would be, we'd be most grateful. It will help us get there.
It's just, uh, kind of correct right for the book. We talked a lot about this at, at the meeting that we had, but maybe some folks have watched that meeting, or didn't watch that meeting, but are watching this meeting.
Sure.
Um, so we're talking about basically, um, renovating a facility that's been donated by the Mother of God Monastery into daycare, um, is, and would, would this be a donation be to? What would it be? What, what entity would it go to?
So it would go, the monastery owns the fourteen thousand square foot, uh, of building that would become the new home to Little Blessings. Um, it needs to move off the Campus of Family Worship Center for various reasons. And this renovation even it's cheaper to renovate this fourteen thousand square foot rather than build a new fourteen thousand square foot something somewhere. And so this would go only to renovation. It isn't about the operations whatsoever. Um, I wrote a business plan, uh, couple of months ago and got the okay to apply for a S D Works loan. And part of my business plan was to have support, financial support. It's a community challenge. It's a community solution. And so your, um, generosity and, uh, additional help making this happen would be helping to fulfill this piece of the business plan so that this five hundred thousand dollar S D Works loan can be a possibility. Um, there's a lot of traction that has happened within the business community just since I was here last. And which I think was three or four weeks ago. Um, and so, um, the business community has stepped up now. And again, I'm very grateful, um, you know, Little Blessings currently can house a hundred and twenty-five kids. This will put the, the ability, the capacity to two hundred and twenty-five children with the largest, um, realized gain from infant to five years old. So it's much needed in our community. And as you know, the Boys and Girls Club dovetails perfectly, as does the school district to the after-school care. So we're really getting a continuum of daycare now in Watertown that's very effective.
I have a, oh, yes. Just kind of interested question. So what, what, what entity would it go to with this?
It would go to the monastery because the monastery owns the building and we're gonna like build the suit.
Is it gonna be, is it, it's, will it be a, because I think at the meeting, we talked about another nonprofit running the thing.
Right, so Little Blessings becomes its own new nonprofit. Currently, they're under the Family Worship Center. The monastery, the mon- monastery won't own it. It will be a standalone, um, entity and the monastery will help set that up.
The question that I had is the continuing operation of it after it's established. Have you, uh, got that in your business plan? How is that gonna? I'm just interested, you know, because everybody says you can't make money with a daycare. Okay, and that's probably the, the same case here. So what's the financial?
Well, um, so we did our due diligence and we have been, um, in contact with and consultation with, um, Jesse and Ryan Holty of Sioux Falls to help us do this. They had four very successful. Um, it was their family business and sold it right as the pandemic was breaking out. So they have been our consultants. We have a pro forma. We have a complete revamp of the business model. You have to be efficient. And just like all businesses. And so we know that there's some things that could be done differently when new eyes look at your current business model and say, well, we can do this, we can do that differently. Um, any nonprofit needs help, just like the Boys and Girls Club gets help. Um, so part of our business plan will be um, chasing grants because there are a lot of grants out there. And so you, you chase programmatic grants for your sustainability over the years, but you also really get down to the business part of things. And part of the business plan is to make sure that we are constantly reaching out to new parents, right, so that their babies come and are cared for at, at this new entity and that they stay with you for the next five years. So part of that goes into how do we train and educate our staff? You know, so part of that is, this is a profession and I don't know that it's often looked at as a profession. So staff, um, sustainability and stability is really important in this model. Um, I'm happy to show the pro forma with you if that's something that y'all would be interested in or even the business plan. But, um, it was, I felt good about it because G O E D gave me the okay to apply for the loan. So I felt like, because they've seen all that data. And so was really, and so A B and T passed back our, um, S D Works loan too. So they've seen the pro forma. And so that A B and T, um, American Bank of Trust and G O E D liked what they saw gave me great hope that everybody else would understand and affirm that business model.
I, I asked that question simply because you know, we don't, we don't want to build this, uh, facility and then have it not affordable for the people that need it.
I agree.
And we have to, we don't want to, uh, uh, be competitive. Well, we will be competitive to the home the, uh, individuals that are offering home care.
Well.
Daycare out of their home. We don't wanna, we're not trying to, uh, run them out of business is what I, I.
Oh, absolutely not. No, this is a different model of daycare. You, and we need all the different options for parents to choose from, whether it's your neighbor or friend from church down the street that watches your little ones, or if it is a more, um, a, a larger, I don't like the word facility because it's about people and kids and not the buildings. But, so, um, the, that's one of the reasons why we need support because we would price ourselves right out of the market if we took, took out a two point five million dollar loan and had to have that on the backs of the fees that the parents would pay. So, um, part of the business plan is that, just like you get a cost of living increase, staff need to get one too. And so there will be a yearly annual raise in the fees. There just has to be because it has to be in the black. And so this is for renovation, not for operations.
Okay.
Could you share with us one more time the timeframe? What, what are we, what, I know you did the other night.
Yes.
Went through it, but there was a lot of, we got a lot of information that night.
We did.
I got all kinds of notes, but I can't make heads or tail though.
I'm not, I'm not gonna volunteer to make heads or tail of your notes, but I'll fill in the blanks. Um, my S D Works loan is due on September tenth. So this and, um, your generosity and the cities, because the city is, is here in alignment with this effort, um, will be part of that. So once S D Works releases that money, we can swing the hammer. We have already gotten all of our construction docs approved by the city of Watertown. Our zoning changes have happened and approved by the city of Watertown. The state licensure has already approved our, our plans and construction docs. And we've gotten the okay to care for two hundred and twenty-five children. Literally, all we need is the, the S D Works and the local support to happen and we can swing the hammer. We have a G M P. The contractors are there. Everything's ready to go.
So estimated time of the first move in?
What, uh, as a woman of faith, I want a miracle and say it's four months, but it's probably six months. And so, um, because we need parking lot work, we're gonna have to be on the edge of springtime to make sure that happens. So I would say, um, hopefully by mid-October, we get the okay to swing the hammer. And then we are looking at six months. And the wonderful thing is that Family Worship Center has agreed to keep Little Blessings open and operating. Um, and the staff can be assured of their jobs, um, until we can actually move children into the new, um, new daycare.
Sister Barb, is the intent with the staffing to, to transfer that staff from Little Blessings to your facility then?
It surely is.
Okay.
Surely is.
Okay.
Yes, Kirsten, uh, uh, Fisk and Ashley Olson are the directors there. Together, they have over thirty-five years of experience. They've done a phenomenal job with their staff and caring for those kids like a family.
Okay, Mr. Chair.
Oh, good, yes.
Could I invite, uh, the city manager Amanda Mack, uh, to come up? I'm sure.
You're welcome.
She's here today.
Oh.
Yeah, Sister Barb, you can stay there.
We have two chairs.
Yes, you do.
This is very like personal.
It is.
Good morning, City Manager Mack. Um, can you tell us, I guess, the, what the city's, uh, involvement is in this project?
Yeah, so we, um, have a similar action on the agenda for tonight. Um, ours would be structured as a, um, seventy thousand dollar annual commitment for five years uh, to help with the transition of Little Blessings. It would go specifically to capital. Um, I think we're still working out the details of, uh, development agreement is how we would structure that. Beyond the Little Blessings, um, situation, we also recognize that, uh, when we talk about the work that we do as a city, we often talk about it in terms of landing a plane. And, uh, the Little Blessings, uh, situation is sort of our first layover if we're going across the country. We're making a layover in Chicago with Little Blessings. Um, we need to make sure that we're not adding to the crisis already, um, which is why the council is entertaining, um, entering into this agreement to keep Little Blessings going. Beyond Little Blessings, we have a shortage of about six hundred, um, childcare spots in Cottington County and a majority of those are ages zero to three. Which the school district obviously, um, doesn't play a role in and Boys and Girls Club, you know, that's not really their, their target market. So to your comment about the, the home providers, um, the in-home providers are not going to be able to make up the difference of six hundred, um, spots and six hundred basically makes us whole. It doesn't put us ahead. Um, so hopefully we can continue to grow into that. So beyond the action that the council will consider tonight, um, we also have been working through some options, um, you know, potentially a revolving loan fund. Uh, if facilities are the way, the, the, the best way to close that gap of six hundred, that requires some real capital costs. And so if we can work with our partners in government, utilities, the business community, um, to develop a revolving loan fund that anyone who's doing childcare, whether they're in home or they wanna take an existing facility and renovated or build a facility, you know, could have access um, to those dollars. Uh, we think that that's the most equitable way, uh, to try and, uh, tackle this. Um, as Sister Barb said, other communities have been very successful with some state and federal grants, um, which I think we uh, will work hard to, to continue to pursue, um, as well, but it, it takes all of us, um. You guys, you know, went through, uh, your budget hearing this morning and you'll have several more of those as will be in October and, uh, this is not the best timing, uh, to be investing, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, but it is the right time to be investing in these kinds of things, um, because ultimately they help grow our community. So that was a lot of words. I don't know if I answered.
No, you did.
So we, 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 we planned to pass our budget at the end of this month and we can do amendments to do whatever it is, but that, I guess, you need something between now and then.
I need some kind of L O I or whatever that I can accompany my application to, uh, G O E D.
So.
You know, some text of a, a resolution compared to, to discuss it that way.
Okay, so, so just to back up here a little bit, a few of us attended the childcare, uh, meeting at Lake Area Tech, uh, last week on Wednesday and we sat through the presentation and we participated in that discussion, uh, which was led by, um, City Manager Mack. It was a very good session. There was a lot of key players in the community that were there. And, uh, and I appreciated that. That was eye-opening for me and, and your presentation here. Um, so I don't know if, um, since we're taking action, is this a good time for me to make a, a motion? So, um, having the, this, uh, discussion and knowing what the community need was, uh, we reached out to our partners at the Watertown Development Company and, uh, had a discussion with them. And we're actually gonna reduce the amount of funding to the Watertown Development Company. They have agreed that this is also something that fits into their mission. Uh, so we're gonna reduce that by thirty thousand dollars. My motion would be to, um, to do thirty thousand dollars a year for the next five years totaling a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to this project with the hopes that, uh, the city of Watertown, uh, takes action tonight to come up with the remaining balance of what is needed for that S D Works grant. So, um, that's my motion. Um, and it's just, uh, really, it's reallocating those. So that's my motion. And it's just, really, it's reallocating those funds from the W D C to to this project, which I think if there's ever an emergency, this is it. And so although we don't cherish the idea of doing that, I think that if there's ever a situation where W D C would actually support, it would be this one as well. It's it's in their, in their realm as well. So with that, that's my motion, 30,000 a year for the next five years. Thank you.
Could you repeat that?
Sure.
I would say yes, we just use this draft a solution to make it very clear what we're saying. It's okay, I can put it on the screen. That just to make sure that that's going to answer the mail for what.
We can't approve the resolution at the meeting because it's not on the agenda. Is that correct?
Well, yes.
We, we, we put it, had, we had it mentioned on the agenda.
Okay.
If we put it as intended, we put it as intended in in our minutes either way, you know, the the key thing is that last paragraph.
So do you want me to read that?
Yeah, that, I mean, that that explains it. And the other, the other thing that that I want to.
Now therefore be it resolved by the Connington County Board of Commissioners at a regular meeting held on September 3rd, 2024, that Connington County shall budget to reduce its current pledge to the Watertown Development Company by $30,000 annually and shall budget to pledge $30,000 annually for a period of five years. Beginning in 2025 for the purpose of helping to fund renovation of the current facilities located at the Mother of God Monastery into suitable daycare facilities.
That's wonderful.
Whether we use the resolution or just put that text in the minutes and that's, that's kind of.
Hey, we've got a a motion. We need a second.
So are we, I'll.
I'm questioning, which way do you want to go? That's what I need to.
The main thing is, I'll, I think what the intent of Commissioner Man dues is just to put it in the minutes and say that's our intent and I'd second that.
So you want me to put that paragraph per se in the minutes and I can do that?
Yeah, I think that would be fine.
Or just instead of using a word resolved.
Yeah, I would just say.
Just the intent of the Conning County Board of Commissioners.
Do we need to put it on the agenda for next week to pass a resolution?
If it's on our minutes, it's okay.
Absolutely. We can do that too. I mean, I can still put it in the minutes that that you, you know, that we had this discussion, you made the motion, you passed it.
That way we would have something on the books as a resolution.
Right. And that's something that I can send with my application. We don't have a meeting till the 10th and you need to send it in. Yeah.
This will be in the minutes.
It'll be, if if you give me that section of the minutes or however that works for y'all, that would be fine.
So let me ask this, this question, the intent word. What exactly does that mean? Can can we not take action to formalize this today?
What it means is that when we get to, when we have to do the final budget, we put the budget, we're going to make an amendment and that into our provisional budget. And pass with these changes.
Okay, okay, all right.
Um, well, no. I don't think we have to really make any adjustments in our budget as far as that because we'll have the M O U from this W D C. We'll leave it that it's that they're only going to request half the other half. We'll go then to.
What's, what's currently in the provisional budget right now?
It's.
Sixty, sixty thousand a year.
That would change to 30,000.
Right. And Chris is drafting a letter today.
You can leave that the same. That's not going to change. They're only going to send a request for 30. So the remaining 30 you could, you can put wherever.
Do we need to have another budget line?
No.
For, for, okay, well.
No.
How long is our current commitment?
Five years.
Is that five years started from now then?
No.
Started last year.
Five.
Started.
We have four.
Yep.
So we would be extending this beyond the period of time that we've committed money to the Watertown Development Company.
Correct, this would be for five.
Questioning the five.
No, I mean, yeah, you're right.
So.
So I I'd like to see that changed to four years, not saying that this isn't a good project, but we're, we're not, we haven't, we haven't. We've already spent 30,000 for the Watertown Area Development Company. We're committing for five, which we're committing for one year more than we committed to them already.
So what the W D C said their new pledge will be for calendar years 25, 26, 27 and 28. For the 30,000.
Oh, my motion is for funding for five years. Period.
I think a year one would be 25.
Then you're taking 30 beyond, beyond the money that we've already allocated. You're going into unallocated funds. Because this motion says Watertown Development Company, we have four years left on that agreement.
It doesn't say, I don't see where it says.
Pledge.
Says that just says we're just writing a pledge. That's all it says.
It it'll be up for review every year.
Yeah.
Just, it's just like we're changing the Watertown Development. We have allocated from 60 to 30. We're changing that. And it's possible when we clear the budget at the end of the month that it will be 30 and 30. So the discussion will be every year like everything else is. But it is a good point. It is stated for years and we'll take note of that.
Probably down the road, it may not affect me, but I'm sure that Watertown Development will come with another five, six, 10-year plan again. And we'll, we'll still be involved in this project and we have the right to deny it. Or or to readjust it so that it fits into the budget. So I'm not gonna have any heartache about that. We'll be able to handle that at a later time. Or you, someone will be able to handle that.
Yeah.
I may not be here.
You'll be.
Right.
All right.
So you're going to commit to this for five years. Whatever happens on after four years with Watertown Development will be something you'll address at that time.
Right.
And it's just a matter of curiosity for my feel not. You said you had a lot of interest in the private people at this meeting. Did you get any commitments from any of them?
The the commitments that I've gotten thus far is that they are talking to each other. So for instance, we've had some offers of reduction in material, renovation materials. So those kinds of things are starting to happen. I think when the parents came to the open forum a couple of weeks ago. I think that was a piece that needed to happen. And so now I've had, like I said, several business folks in town starting to approach me. They haven't made a commitment yet because they're all trying to gather it in when we knew that we would have the meeting last week with all of you in the city. So everybody is still wrapping their head around it at this point. But the fact that they said they wanted to come up to the site, they had some ideas. Is enough evidence to me that they have good intention and just have to codify it.
It it may be payment in kind. To some extent.
Sure, if if a supplier of drywall says we'll knock 10% off or the some, the person who's going to paint says we'll knock 10% off our labor cost, heck yeah, we'll take that.
Well, I think 100%.
100%. I will tell them that you said that, Mr. Johnson.
Well, pony up.
It, yes, and all of our, you know, all the construction folks are from Watertown. So it, I'll, I'll tell them you, you said pony up.
And I know.
A little pressure.
Mr. Chair, if I could just add one more thing. I know Sarah Faust has been a key player in these discussions and has been an integral part in this whole thing and we appreciate Sarah's work on that. Also, she would have liked to have been here today but had a conflict. So that's why she is not.
She's been a wonderful leader. She, you are lucky to have her.
Yes, we are.
We know that. Yep.
Commissioner Gable.
Just want to emphasize the point. So the the way we wrote that last paragraph in the resolution, which will now just be a, you know, thing in the minutes. And we want to, it's good, even though the donation is going to Mother of God Monastery, I don't want, I don't want anybody to get the idea that this is some kind of a religious.
No.
Intent is, is to, I mean, it's it's for a community purpose. But you just happen to be the entity that donated the property that's going to run the renovation.
That's right.
So just so folks understand that.
Yep.
I, I appreciate you making that comment. I think that that was a point that needed to be clarified for for the public is this is not a donation to to them.
No, it's, we, we are a nonprofit. Our books have to be kept clean. So leave me, we've got a great accountant who makes sure we do that.
Yeah.
So one question, we are still putting it on next week for a resolution to be passed as well, correct?
I don't see why we need to do that if it's in the minutes. If that answers your nail.
If you don't need it. Okay.
No.
If she doesn't need a resolution, as long as we say that it's. I'll double check. Okay. That's all. Because I just need to know by Thursday noon. I just thought I could put it in the minutes that next week, at next week's meeting, we will be passing a resolution.
Make that Wednesday at noon. She needs to know by Wednesday.
I do my minutes tonight. I'll be done. But. It's just something you can let them know then if that's something we're going to do.
Okay, any further, go ahead.
So or the minute, or we do approve minutes next week, Tuesday. So yeah, that's.
They always like to see a signature at the bottom, you know.
Okay, so we have.
Do you have a stamp?
Yeah, I've got a stamp. I got a lot of favors to stand.
Stamp the minutes I do.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good luck tonight. We're gaining, gaining momentum. If we're gaining momentum, we're gaining.
Momentum and traction.
Momentum and, and if people see that we're all trying to work together and and move ahead, you know, move ahead.
Absolutely.
Yes, thanks for coming and sharing.
All right, we'll be out.
Okay, we're down to number.
No 13, no 14, no 15, no 16.
So we're down to 17, action to approve travel requests.
So you only have two of those. One is West Nile Virus for a conference. And the other one is Community Services for a Beyond Idea Grant recipient.
Hold it approved.
Motion by Johnson. Second by Gable to approve the travel request. Any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion.
There was one more, Community Service, South Dakota Housing Authority meeting. I'm sorry. So there was two for Community Service, one is South Dakota Housing Authority meeting.
I'll extend that motion to include that.
Okay, thank you.
A motion by Johnson, second by Gable. To include that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, number 18, public notice of possible quorum of the commissioners.
I, I don't know how many of you got this invitation or are aware of it, but we won't meet again until the 17th.
No, we meet next week, the 10th.
Oh, the 10th. Oh, that, but on the 17th, there is a a flood control meeting at the Ram Cora at 5:30. And that's to review what has been happening as far as the flood control in Watertown and kind of the county, I suppose.
Who's putting that meeting on, Myron? At the city or FEMA or?
I think FEMA is putting it on, but the city is of course involved and. And.
You got a room number on that one?
At Ram Cora, I'm sure it's at the, yeah, it's at the event center.
302.
I don't know.
Somebody's motel room.
Whether it's.
Probably in that, what's that thing called? That theater.
Heard it's theater.
Yeah.
And it doesn't, doesn't affect the quorum or anything, but next week at this time, I'll be at the S D R S quarterly meeting and peer.
And I'll be attending the council meeting tonight. Anybody plans to go there?
So on 17th of 18th, we'll be at the S D U's convention as well, so.
Hey, is there any old business? Number 20, is there any new business? Okay, number 21, it's time for the open public comment. Come on up.
I hate to do this, guys. Our copy machine died last week and I couldn't get any quotes or anything for a new copy machine until Friday, which couldn't get on the budget. We found out that it takes at least two weeks to a month to get a new one. So I'm kind of wondering if I can get maybe a couple of head nods that I can order one and then get it on the agenda next week to get it okayed. It is budgeted item. It was a used one we've had for many years and we were hoping it would last another one, but it's irreparable.
You're saying it is a budget?
It is budgeted.
For that year.
No, it's been in the budget every year just because it acts like it's going to die and then it doesn't. And then now it it really died.
It's over the 2,000.
It's over the 2,000 mark. So that's why we have to get, yeah.
I think we can hire a sketch artist.
Yeah.
For less, I can just.
Probably not, not as often as we. Not as often as we need a copy machine.
Okay.
I would say we should just put it on.
Yeah, we'll put it on still for next week. At least you can get.
Yes, get the, because if it takes that long.
Yes, and we are going to start all of our assessment programs and so we'll be needing it. It's not a great time for it to go down.
Meantime, you'll have to run across the hall.
We have one small one that copies. It just takes a long time and uses a lot of.
So is that, are we currently leasing our copiers and paying by copy or are we buying the copier already?
We have now gravitated, we had one apartment that was leasing and now they have changed over to purchasing, which has been suggested by legislative audit is our best. It's best for us to purchase and not lease. So.
And that is because of the extra.
Yeah, that's a discussion a couple of years ago, of pros and cons of leasing and purchasing and purchasing was deciding the way to go.
Yeah, it's a hit at first, but in the long run, it's it's better to purchase.
And we've looked into all and I'm getting quotes from two different companies, Office Peeps and A and B Business, just to make sure we can get the better deal.
It's a lot of times and you'll have those agreements, you know, that they cover.
Yep, and then they do the service agreements.
Maintenance agreements, yep.
Okay.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you.
You got the green light.
Giving us a heads up.
We'll get it on the agenda next week.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any commissioner comments?
We know there's a construction meeting at the Extension Center in a few minutes.
Hopefully they'll break down very, very soon out there.
Okay, we do need an executive session for.
Number three.
Number three.
Contract negotiation.
Yes.
That it?
So motion by Gable, second by Waterman to go on an executive session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.